Okay, this is the meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Ed on January 24th, 2019. Time is now 6:35 PM. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to union negotiations and confidential employee issues?
Show moved. Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor? We're now in executive session. Welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting on January 24th. Can I have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some agenda modifications. We'll be moving the Personnel Agenda out of the Consent Agenda and moving that to 11.8. We'll also be adding a resolution to, for separation agreement, which will be 11.9. Can I have a motion to accept the Agenda modification?
Show moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Close? Motion carries. Kind of odd, I have to look both ways and I'm only looking one side now.
Yeah, you don't even have to look over.
So, upcoming events, January 30th and 31st, orientation at FDR. So, it's been rescheduled. It was last week?
Yeah, but it's on the calendar, so I just wanted to make sure we mentioned it.
Okay, so it is for the 30th and 31st? Or it's already happened?
Already happened.
It's already happened, so there isn't any orientation. Okay, on February 2nd, the Hyde Park Education Foundation fundraiser, the movie Romeo and Juliet, showing at the Roosevelt Cinema. On Wednesday, February 13th, will be the STEM Fair at Netherwood Elementary School. And Thursday, February 14th, will be the next Board of Ed meeting, and that will be at North Park Elementary. And on to Pride. Patrick?
Yeah, it's a short Pride this week. So, these, the 2018-2019 Regional Scholastic Art Award winners for FDR, there were 19 silver and gold key awards, seven were gold and 12 were silver. And the winners were Jackie Kinsley, she got two silver keys. Maria Hart won gold. Michael Cake got five gold and five silver. Megan Odell got one silver. And Eden Palmer got one gold and four silver keys. There were 23 honorable mention awards and 74 participation awards, all from FDR, so, and that's it for this week.
Awesome. So, any other Pride?
I have a few things. The Town of Hyde Park Historical Society held its annual holiday luncheon. Many members brought new warm hats, mittens, gloves, and scarves for the Hyde Park Elementary Schools. They've been sorted by Carney Reinhold, the first present and museum director, and were distributed to the health offices of Violet Avenue, Smith, Netherwood, North Park, and St. Peters. And Patsy Castello is the president of the Hyde Parks Historical Society. She shared this information with us. And I also wanted to share that our district leadership team has set the stage for the next phase of the Four Seas Initiative. Teachers will start to use the Critical Thinking Rubric with students for them to evaluate their own skills, as well as teachers evaluating 21st century skills using the rubrics.
Any other Pride? Okay, so we'll move on to presentations and reports. The superintendent's report?
I just want to share that Dr. Rycheck is visiting High Tech Middle School with a group from Havelin Middle School. This was, the high school was highlighted in the film Most Likely to Succeed that we showed at the Wallace Center a couple of years back, showcasing 21st century learning. And just, I'm sure everyone knows by now, but we did have a two-hour delay on Tuesday due to extremely cold temperatures, and it's Regents Week at FDR.
Okay, and on to 7.2, update on progress of integrating New York State learning standards into instructional practices. Claudia Viva?
That's me, too.
Hey. New podium. Oh, yeah. Ooh, hotter than spending money again. New podium.
It's been around.
Has it been?
Yeah. It's not new. It's just new here.
I'm just so old, I just, they don't.
We're testing you. It's only been here a year.
Okay. So, this presentation serves to meet three of your board goals for the year. Your first goal is to receive semi-annual updates on progress of integrating New York State learning standards into instructional practices. This is the first of those two updates. So, rather than create two very similar presentations, I focus tonight more on compliance. So, tonight is not as fun as the one in June, which is going to be really a celebration of teaching and learning. But there's important information that you should have. It will also address Board Goals 3 and 4, to receive a review of recent changes to the number of testing days required by the state, and to provide you with a review of all the steps the state has made to address parent concerns with an intent to increase participation and include a comprehensive report of what standardized tests are being given in all of our schools now, and potential penalties for low participation. So... Oh, it does work like that. So, the focus on accountability tonight includes a rationale for standardized testing, New York State's Every Student Succeeds Act Plan, and changes to the New York State standardized testing program. Okay, so this is Goal 3. There are now two days of 3 through 8 testing rather than three, and the tests are untimed for all students. Part of your Goal 4 is addressed here, so I'm going to go through the steps that New York State has taken to address parent concerns with an eye toward increasing participation in the state tests. Okay. So, part of this is about the rollout of Common Core, you know, that was obviously problematic, and what this state is doing to address it. So, last year, again, they made two-day assessments, actually provide professional development on the Next Generation Standards, and that is continuing. There's more on that later. So, for next year, still two-days assessments, continuation of professional development. And what you can see is that the new Next Generation Standards don't come into play until two full years of professional development. So, when originally Common Core came out, the assessments changed before any professional development could take place. So, teachers were sort of getting the manual along with the test changing. So, this time, they've slowed that down, and there's more in the presentation later about how we are providing that professional development here in Hyde Park. And then the new assessments don't come until spring 2021. And I have to say, the Next Generation Standards are not really that different than the Common Core learning standards that were adopted by New York State. There were some changes, mostly cleaning up language and clarifying, and there was some repetition they're cleaning up, so that is helpful as well. The test questions are now written by teachers instead of by vendors. I've mentioned this a few times about the testing days and being untimed. The moratorium is extended, and then, since the time of this presentation, there's news that the state legislature is actually giving districts the opportunity not to use state testing to evaluate teachers. So, that's just new, and there'll be more on that later, I am sure. And I'm sure we'll get more regulations about what that means and what we can do and not do. But as of a week ago, the moratorium was extended. So, it's extended through next year, and now, you know, perhaps indefinitely. So, this is another part of your goal. This is about, this is really a definition of what standardized tests are, and then I'm going to give you a list of all the tests that we offer in the district that are standardized. I won't read this to you because it's big, and you can see it. Okay. So, this is the rationale for standardized testing. To provide instruction to meet the needs of individual students, offer instructional interventions as needed, recommend appropriate courses, practice-taking tests, passing scores in five regions are required for high school graduations, so it would be problematic if students don't have any practice taking standardized tests. Most colleges do require SAT or ACT as part of admissions, and civil service exam scores determine employment opportunities, and those are standardized tests, you know, under timed conditions. Oh, look. So, for visual learners, something else happened. Okay, so these are the tests we give, 3 through 8, ELA, and math, science in grades 4 and 8. The nicest lot, the New York State English as a Second Language Achievement Test for all English language learners every year. If you're a brand newcomer, I mean, as you come to this country and learning English, you are exempt for one year from the ELA. Otherwise, Ls take that test every year. And the alternative assessment is for students with disabilities meeting very strict criteria. So, less than 1% of our students with disabilities are alternately assessed. Also, NWEA, those are also called MAPS. We give those K through 9 in fall and spring. Many of our teachers are also giving them in spring, in the, sorry, in the winter to get more data going forward for instruction. And this is a nonprofit organization, serving 4.5 million students, and this is, again, their presence. So, it's very, you know, well-known organization. And our Regents exams. So, I'm just going to list them here for you. These are all standardized tests as well. And penalties for low participation. So, the ESSA Plan has been revised to soften the penalties for high opt-out rates, and this is very relevant to us. So, we no longer would have to set aside federal Title I funds after, that would happen after five years of consistently low participation. We would have to do an improvement plan, however. And so, they've just made the requirements for that plan a little less difficult. But that's still in the ESSA Plan. Okay, so this whole piece, I have to say about ESSA. Dr. Rycheck and I were required to attend training on the ESSA Plan. There were 164 slides in the PowerPoint. So, tonight, I'm going to name that tune an 11 Slides of ESSA. So, I know the whole thing is long, but the ESSA part, 11. Okay. So, ESSA starts in the U.S. Department of Ed. The former legislation was called No Child Left Behind, then Race to the Top, and now Every Student Succeeds Act or ESSA. All right. So, this is what ESSA is setting out to accomplish, providing these measures to increase equity. That's their goal. And this is the theory of action for ESSA. This is a little hard to read, so I'm going to actually read this for you. So, the theory of action is if New York identifies the characteristic of highly effective schools that provide culturally responsive teaching and learning, and schools, districts, and the state collaborate to determine the degree to which each school demonstrates highly effective school characteristics, then we collaborate to develop plans to address gaps between current conditions and the highly effective schools' conditions, and we get resources and human capital to implement the plans. They're used effectively, revised as needed, and then additional interventions occur if we're low performing and don't improve. That will hopefully eliminate gaps in achievement. So, that's the theory. And it's similar to the response to intervention process, where you identify highly effective practice, you compare how your school is functioning, you develop plan to address gaps, provide resources, assess regularly and revise, and additional supports, and hopefully eliminate those gaps, which happens a lot in our system. Okay, so these are all the subgroups that have data reported, and that was also in No Child Left Behind and in Race to the Top. So, there's nothing new in all of these subgroups. And then we have some new subgroup where we're going to get, we're going to get data on performance. So, for homeless youth, non-homeless youth, you know, compared to each other, military-connected youth, non-military-connected youth, students in foster care, and students not in foster care. So, it's no longer, or it's not going to be part of our accountability right now, but we are going to get that information. So, that's new under ESSA. And it's important here to note, ESSA is the, again, the federal legislation. It allows states to set goals for these things, not districts. So, the state is setting our goals for us based on our previous performance in all of So, they recognize where we're starting, and they establish both long-term and short-term goals. So, there's indicators now beyond just core academic subjects. So, you can see, you can read this here. They are going to be looking at suspensions. Already, there's ways that we're held accountable, but it's not part of our designation as a school. All right, so I should add here that, at the time when I sent you this presentation, we hadn't gotten our ESSA accountability data yet, but it has since been made public. So, I can tell you that all of our schools are in good standing. Our district is in good standing at the moment, but we do have areas with potential for targeted support and improvement. So, when we talk about them setting these goals, we have areas that are, that, subgroups that are performing in some of our schools where it's on the edge of not meeting the standard. So, we know what those are. The subgroups are not new for us as a district, so there are areas where we've been cited before, and I'll name them for you. Students with disabilities, black students, Hispanic, multiracial, and economically disadvantaged students. So, because three out of six of our schools have those subgroups pointed out as being, you know, potentially falling behind, or falling behind more, you know, what we really want to look at is strategies for our whole system to really address where those gaps are before that happens. And most of them really fall under the, a lot of the work that we've been doing already on equity and that work, and culturally relevant practice, the poverty simulation that we did really addressed a lot of those issues so we can learn more about how to meet the needs of all of our students. So, we're already working on those things, and this just allows us to continue that work and really see, see the difference and hopefully close those gaps. All right. So, again, this speaks to the multiple measures that New York State is going to use, achievement, growth, progress, still graduation rates, proficiency, but now they're looking at absenteeism. We just got that data of where we have, you know, higher rates of absenteeism, and that needs to be addressed, and also college career and civic readiness. Okay, so this is just another way of, this is how the accountability works. So, you can see that we are now schools in good standing, and we are at risk in some areas for that targeted support. So, it's what we used to call a local assistance plan, a LAP, school, where there's, overall the schools are making growth, but then there's one group of students that's not. So, that's where our potential is. So, participation rate. I'm going to have to hear. So, this is how this works. We've talked about this before, or I did a couple of minutes ago, that when we see failing to meet participation rate for two consecutive years, then we'll have to do a plan. And so, this is our second year, so we are not yet held accountable, but by the end of this year, if we don't see better participation rates this spring, then we'll be writing a plan. And you'll see it because it will have to be approved by the board and posted. How do we bring up our participation rate? Okay. So, this last piece is really about how we are implementing the learning standards, the kind of training that we're doing in the Next Generation Learning Standards. This document was shared with teachers on the recommendation of the district leadership team, actually last spring, so that teachers knew a whole year ahead what kind of training was happening. And it doesn't just include the ELA and math training, but just all of the professional development that we're offering. In this piece, I'm focusing on what Jen Kreiser, Amy Niesel have been doing and continue to do. So, these are the awareness sessions in ELA and math, and this is a description. Again, this is a brochure that every teacher received. And I'm not going to read this little print to you, but these are actually all the dates that were given to teachers last spring, and that information continues to be generated. Many, many teachers, most teachers have been attending those sessions. But for anyone who really can't make those sessions, on March 8th, when we have our superintendent's conference day, there's going to be a time for any teacher who's missed it to make up one hour for one of the training and the other hour for the other training, and then just spend less time on the other activities that day. So, that's been planned for a year now, and that's happening. So, any questions?
Thank you, Viva. Next up, we'll have a rollover budget presentation by Linda.
All righty. Good evening, and welcome to the first budget presentation for 2019-20. I was reviewing the presentation earlier, and I just can't get over that we're this far into the future already. 2020, well, here we are. So, tonight's presentation is the rollover budget, which is the starting point for every budget. In a rollover, we assume that everything will remain the same in the coming year as it is right now. That means that we budget for the same number of staff and programs that we currently have. The rollover budget adjusts for known items like salary increases and changes to certain employee benefits. In the coming weeks and months, the budget will be developed more. It'll reflect what we actually expect to spend. We'll have a presentation at every budget, or at every board meeting until the budget vote in May. The things that we'll be updating are, excuse me, the requests from the administrators. We'll have more information on health insurance. We'll also have to talk about the BOSI's capital project and how we'll fund that. In April, we'll present a final preliminary budget. If the board adopts that, that's what we'll ask the voters to approve in May. So, every year, we have to consider these important factors when developing the budget. We want to make sure that we build a budget that preserves the programs for our students, but also is affordable to our taxpayers and ensures that we can continue with our budgets from year to year. So, the assumptions in the rollover are listed here. For our salaries, which include not just the contractual salaries and the step increases, but also overtime and additional pay items, we're assuming a 2.6% increase. Our pension costs are actually decreasing a little bit because the rates for both TRS, which is Teachers Retirement System, and ERS, which is the Employees Retirement System, are decreasing. So, this slide, this slide is something new. Last year, we had talked a little bit about the health insurance, but I wanted to show some more detail this year because I'm really starting to track this. We can't make any decisions about health insurance during budget. Those are negotiated issues, items, but it does affect the budget greatly, so I think it's just important to talk about that and be aware of how the health insurance costs do affect our budgets. So, what I really want to point out here is, well, first of all, just to be aware, that health insurance is our second-largest expense. Salaries, obviously, are the first. However, health insurance increases at a much faster rate than salaries do, so it does have a bigger impact on our budget every year. The chart here shows that in 2007-8, we spent $8.4 million in health insurance for our employees and retirees, but last year, in 2017-18, we spent over $16 million. So, that increase from over those 11 years is over 90%. However, our total expenses increased about 20% in that time. And also, as you can see, in 2007-8, our health insurance was 11% of the total budget, and now it's almost 20. So, this is just a graph of the information that was on the previous page. It's the total health insurance cost as a percentage of the total expenditures for the district. I'm also showing the actual cost for the health insurance plans. Those amounts at the bottom are what the plans cost in total. It's the employee's share and the district's share. But we could, a plan could cost anywhere from $11,000 to $30,000. And again, here we have the number of insured for each plan and each group. The school district covers 927 individuals, but those are our employees and retirees. In addition to that number are the spouses and dependents. About 42% of the health insurance is for retired individuals, and the rest is for our current employees. Okay, so here's some information about the rollover. The rollover budget this year is a little different than last year in that I don't have the health insurance calculated in here yet. I didn't want to have a big swing. Last year, we knew that the health insurance was going to have a really big increase, and we're talking about, DHEC is talking about having a smaller increase this year. I didn't want to assume something when I did the rollover budget, and in the next presentation, I'll have some better, more concrete information. So, I'll have assumptions about the health insurance in the next presentation. So, the numbers that you see here will definitely rise because health insurance will go up. But with the salaries increases and the changes for pension costs and the payroll taxes, we know that the budget will increase by at least $907,000, which is just under 1%. So, here I just show that same information, just broken down into the categories that we usually talk about. We always compare these expense categories from year to year. Like I said earlier, you can see that salaries are increasing by the 2.6% or 1.1 million. We have the decrease in benefits so far because we've only shown changes for the pension costs, which are going down, and the payroll taxes. So, our rollover budget is the $95.9 million, which is a $907,391 increase, or 0.95%.
And you're keeping that BOSI's line flat even though you know it's not?
That'll go up, too. I'll have more information on that in the next presentation also. The initial service requests are due to BOSI's next week, and in those, they have some assumptions for increases. And then the programs that they don't know yet are increasing. I'm assuming they'll increase about 3%. Well, we're required to show the budget in its three parts, program, admin, and capital. So, the program costs include the regular and special education, or regular and special education. So, the program costs include the regular and special education, or regular and special education instruction, co-curricular activities, and also transportation. So, the admin costs are the Board of Ed costs, central administration, finance, legal, and human resources. And capital includes facilities, operations and maintenance, debt service, and any capital outlet projects that we may have. So, like I said earlier, there will be a budget presentation at every Board of Education meeting until the budget vote in May. The next presentation on February 14th will include requests from the administrators and an assumption for BOSI's and health insurance. The tax cap calculation will be discussed in March at the, or I'm sorry, in February 28th. And then in March, George will be here to talk about the bus proposal and what he's requesting for that. In April, we hope to have the final budget ready for the board to adopt, and we would present that again at the budget hearing on May 9th and present it to the voters for approval on May 21st. So, I don't have anything else, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Just one question. With the town looking at doing a sewer project, are you going to be looking at just estimating that if the town goes through this, what the cost will be to the district?
Yes, and I'm not sure what year that would occur, but we are looking into that. I'm meeting with our financial advisor on February 7th, and one of our agenda items is to talk about how we could potentially finance a project like that. And we have to determine what the cost would be for here in Hyde Park Elementary School. We don't know yet if we would be required to have the project, and we're not sure if we could, we couldn't get aid for, on this building because we don't have students here, and I'm not sure if we could get aided for Hyde Park Elementary because we do have the UPK program there. That's something I have to look into yet.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
So, at this time, can I have a motion to open public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please state your name.
Doug Aglinton, homeowner here for a number of years. Doug, don't you grin at me like that. This is entirely inappropriate timing to follow the budget presentation, okay? And I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, but you have got to decrease expenses somehow. I left this for each of you. You should look at this. You've got a lot of people in this town who can't afford the present rate of tax for the schools. Read the, if you didn't read this carefully, read it. Somehow, the board has got to reduce expenses. We can't keep going up forever, up and up and up. That's all this country does, up and up and up and up. The way to stop it is here at the local level. You folks have all, you board members are all elected, you represent people in this town, and you've got to decrease expenses. With that, I will leave you, and I don't envy you. It's difficult. As Doug knows, I sat here with this board for three years as a, just as a listener. You have a difficult job, and I know that, but you've got to, you can't, I mean, this has got to stop. We'll end up with a dictatorship.
Doug?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Seeing none, at this time, public participation is now closed. And Doug, I will read through this and look at this article. Anything else?
Just that the whole system has to change. We get mandated expenses that have to pass down, and in most cases, it would require a reduction in academic delivery. So, I understand your problem, and you've been coming, you're a faithful, but it's not as easy as saying, "I'm just going to spend less money," because we have all these requirements that go up that we have no control over, and yet, we have a tax cap that we have to meet, and as it is, it's difficult to meet that. So, I'm glad you don't envy our job because it is tough, and we're doing the best we can, and we will take your advice under advisement, and we'll do the best we can. I mean, we're, we're...
And go to work on the state. As we all know, part of the problem is this blessed state. The state government, the education department, they all need work and they need improvement. Thank you.
I would just add that the only thing scarier than the fact of rising taxes would be a failing education system.
Yeah.
So, I think that, you know...
It's not like we have a choice.
No. I mean, we all understand that, you know, we have to control costs as much as we possibly can, and we make every decision based on that.
We still have to be mindful, but, I mean, people have to understand how difficult, under the rules the state has given us, and the expenses and the healthcare especially, I mean, if you saw the number, it's like $1,003 a month that I think we spend on. So, it's, and if that goes up 10%, and we can only increase our taxes by this year 2%, is that correct? Well, after the, we'll see.
A formula might come out over, a little over that.
There's a disconnect between retirement, healthcare, and fair wages for our employees. I mean, yes, people get upset that we give raises, but that's the fair thing to do if you want to have a good district. And so, it's, yes, we have to do the best job we can, yet, it's not as easy as most people think.
And I think in some of your presentations, you show what's out of our control and what actually we can control, right? I mean, that's really the interesting number, and people would be surprised when they pay attention to what's in our control.
You can definitely show more of that, too.
Any other? Okay, so, moving on, subcommittee reports?
The only thing I can, would report on is the Dutchess County School Board Association held its legislative breakfast, second annual legislative breakfast, on January 12th, and it was well attended by board members, superintendents, and business officials throughout the district, as well as, I think we had three elected officials there and at least two other offices that were represented. A good dialogue. Sue Serino was in attendance, which is always good, I think, to see our local people there. Like I say, it was a good dialogue, some good conversation about, again, mandates and the way SED works and how we work within SED, and I think it was a good opportunity, and we look forward to continuing that dialogue.
So, can we move on to the consent agenda? Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. To do business, can I have a motion for 11.1, Special Education placements?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2, Legal Sediment, Copyright Infringement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion for 11.3, Vendor Agreement with Amy Brainerd Piano Company.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, Vendor Agreement, Visiting Author Nancy?
Castaldo.
Castaldo, thank you.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Can somebody just give me a little bit about what we get for that?
Yes, she's coming.
Would you please go to the microphone and then?
I have to.
Yeah.
We may have just lost a future attendee, you know?
This one happens. Nancy Castaldo is a local author from Chatham. She has written a lot of nonfiction for elementary and middle school level students. She's come to Violet Avenue on February 5th to do three assemblies, a 4-5, a 2-3, a K-1 assembly. She'll have an author's luncheon with the students. They have to write letters and convince us that they're worthy of having lunch with her and what discussion they'll have with her. And then she's doing a book signing with the students. We are able to have a pre-book sale, and students could order books ahead of time that will be in the building on that day, and they can bring books that they already might have from her because she's been to our building before and have their books signed by her. Would you like some information beyond that?
Well, I just, I mean, it...
She does writing with the students, talks about her writing process, and she goes, obviously, more in-depth with the 4-5 students, and then the 2-3 students, and a much more simpler presentation for the K-1 students, where her ideas come from, what her writing process is, how she gets her books published.
And we've done this previously?
Yeah, she's been around for a while, hasn't she?
She's been to the district once before, and she's done several book signings at Oblin Book in Rhinebeck.
Okay. It just...
It's part of our Parents' Reading Partners Program to motivate students, inspire students, help let them understand why we want them to write.
You know what, and I'm very much in favor of encouraging people to read and write. I just, it's got a little surface tension for me on this that we're providing a marketing opportunity for her here, and we're paying her for it.
I think my daughters met her, and it actually encouraged them to work on the writing.
I agree. I agree. I'm just, to me, it just...
It wasn't for the marketing, it was for the whole, the writing aspect.
Well, but she is selling books.
The first time that we, in our building, have been allowed to have a book sale as part of the author's visit. Last time, we weren't allowed to do that, but since other buildings in the district were doing it, we were given permission this time.
I mean, I just, I think we...
It wasn't a huge amount of money that was spent. I promise you, our families don't have it.
Well, but, I mean, we're paying her to come in and then allowing her to sell books. Think about how that, on the surface, just, it raises some questions. I mean, we've had some questions about letting outside people come in and have opportunities in the school. Is this, you know, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just thinking, I think it needs, it's worthy of a little discussion for future years. And are there others? The other question is...
We'd be happy to follow the policy.
Yeah. Do we have other, you know, are there other writers in this area? I know that there are other school districts in the area that bring writers in. I'm not, I'm not sure that they pay them to come in.
I mean, my understanding is, because we've had author's visits for a long time, that you do pay them. I mean, some we can't afford, and some we can.
We've paid for them in different ways, different grants and things we've paid for them with, but they've always been paid. Nobody's ever come in out of the generosity of their heart to present to students.
Were they also selling books at the same time?
Some have.
Yeah? Yeah.
Also, I don't know what the percentages are, but an author that I know talked about what, how many cents she makes per book. It's like 3 cents. Like, the deals with publishers are, it's not so much that person being enriched, it's way more an opportunity for children to get that book, or those books, while you're all excited about the author.
We were given a 20% discount off of the price of, the normal price of the books to get them for students, and the price went anywhere from $7 to $17 a book, so we're not talking anything outrageous. And the majority of them were hard copy books.
And from a budget standpoint, there's certainly things to put this against?
My guess is it's, it's part of arts and education, but I'm not sure.
I think it was parent involvement money because we're inviting parents to come into the assemblies as well.
So, then that would mean that's federal grant money in that case? But it's, it's here before the board, not because it's coming from the general fund, but because it's a contract, and all contracts have to come before the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. I would have just said the one sentence from the agenda, so I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.5, the vendor agreement with NWEA?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.6, the vendor agreement, Frontline Education Guidance Direct?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Can I have a motion for 11.7, the vendor agreement, Lauren Stanford, Lifeguard?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Can I have a motion for 11.8, Personnel Agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I will need a motion to amend, to add, Appendix A.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel Agre, or Gen, Agreement has been edited, so any discussion on the edited motion? All those in favor of the Personnel Agreement? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.9, Resolution Separation Agreement and General Release?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we are now open again, or can I have a motion to open for public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Anybody else would like to address the board, please go to the microphone? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. There is no other matter deemed necessary by the board. So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you for coming.